All right, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, July 16th, 2024, 9:04 a.m. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Cornier, Commissioner Gary Edwards, Commissioner Emily Klaus. We have Commissioner Caroline Mahia as well, participating virtually. County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Managers Robin Campbell and Rob Gelder. Three-hour session, take a break in halfway through, public virtual attendance on Thurston County YouTube channel. First up is to re-review the agenda for this afternoon, which we did yesterday, so it might be pretty quick, but we'll just kind of flip back through, double-check any items where there were questions from the board, so we'll start with that. And, meeting of course called to order at 2:00 p.m., pledge allegiance to be led by Commissioner Mahia. You look at the agenda for approval, and then there's no presentations or proclamations this week. You have an opportunity for the public to address the board, and then county managers update.
Still nothing to report.
Okay, and then we have expanded consent agenda from our conversation yesterday. We took certain items out of department items, so now we have A through K. So we'll just go through those. Number one is proclamation for Bi-Pac Mental Health Awareness Month. This is something that came to us late, but we wanted to recognize, and so we're having it be signed and issued by the commission through the consent agenda. Any questions on this item this morning? Okay, CPED's up next. We have inter-local agreement with City of Yelm in critical area permit processing.
Brett, was there anyone coming to like represent?
I don't think so because we're just doing it through consent. Certainly, opportunity makes. I don't know.
Was there any? There wasn't anything?
We're not planning any.
There, there are going to be some individuals coming in for public comment.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they'll add their comments about the proclamation to the public comment?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Brett, go ahead. Item 3B.
Thank you. Brett Burris, Development Services Manager for Community Planning and Economic Development. The City of Yelm has requested to enter into an inter-local agreement with Thurston County to allow the City of Yelm to conduct permitting processing of required critical area permits for those properties within the permitting jurisdiction of Thurston County. A little background of what Phase 2 Yelm Loop is, it's a project that is approximately three miles of new highway composed of one travel lane in each direction. The new highway would have limited access with no driveway connections directly onto the proposed highway for the majority of the project. Managed access, meaning some driveways allowed, will be near the intersection of State Route 507 and the new Yelm Loop project. And you can see from the attachment and the map of the location of the project and what part of Thurston County jurisdiction and what's in Yelm jurisdiction. So the recommended action today is move to enter into an inter-local agreement with the City of Yelm to allow the City of Yelm to process critical area permits for properties located within the urban growth area associated with the Yelm Loop Phase 2 project. As discussed yesterday, this project is a federally funded project and has gone through the NEPA process, which is the federal process similar to our CEPA process, which is the State Environmental Policy Act. So they have gone through diligent review with the feds in order to determine what critical areas are.
Questions for Brett? Have we had an agreement like this before, Brett, with any other jurisdictions?
We've had permitting services to other jurisdictions with the City of Olympia for a subdivision project, the City of Yelm, which I discussed yesterday, which is a small espresso stand project. We've had these throughout the years. In my five years here, we've had at least four.
We're good to go?
Thank you. Thank you.
3C is IT, 3C and 3D, contract renewal for Open Gov Maintenance and licensing is 3C. Sheri Oak, good morning.
Good morning. Sheri Oak, IT Director, and I have a request to renew our Open Gov Maintenance and Licensing Agreement. Open Gov is the reporting and transparency platform that we use as part of putting our budget and information out on the website. If you have other questions about that, Robin is the master of Open Gov. But we are renewing the contract for three years. The total cost is $161,812, and it's in our rates that we collect every year and in our budget.
Questions for Sheri? Okay, I want to go head on to 3D, contract renewal with Pure Storage.
3D is, Pure Storage is our storage, our data storage that we use. We've used it for four years, and it has a new three-year contract for $58,810, and that is also in our IT rates that we collect for every year and in our budget.
Questions for Sheri? Thank you.
Thank you.
On to 3E, Public Health and Social Services, amended interdepartmental agreement with Superior Court for CJTA funds. Shaylan Sowers, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Shaylan Sowers, Behavior Health Fund Program Manager with Public Health and Social Services. As mentioned yesterday, this item is in regards to the Criminal Justice Treatment Account, CJTA funding that Public Health receives from the Washington State Healthcare Authority. Our current contract spans the 2023 through 2025 state fiscal years. Based on current spending levels, we're projecting about $90,000 underspent in CJTA for the 2024 state fiscal year. And since we're in our first year of the biennial contract with the healthcare authority, we are permitted to roll underspent funds into the next fiscal year. For the local CJTA panel's recommendations, we're asking the board to authorize the amendment of the DUI drug court agreement of $139,733 to add an additional $35,000 in CJTA funds for a total of $174,733 for their new treatment services contract with Pierce County Alliance between July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. As Sabrina Craig explained yesterday, the additional funds will cover the cost of Pierce County Alliance staff that administer urinalysis services, input data required by the state for CJTA reimbursement, and process Medicaid claims. These staff have not had salary rate increases since 2018.
Questions for Shaylan? Nope, hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 3F, Public Works Resolution and Call for Sealed Bids for Steel Bridge Fabrication for Shond Drive Southwest. We have Public Works Director, Dr. Walker.
Good morning. So this item is a request for sealed bids to contract for fabricated bridge for Shond Drive Southwest. It is replacing a three-foot culvert with a 33-foot bridge, and it will open up 1.7 miles of additional stream habitat. The estimated cost to manufacture and deliver the bridge is $110,000, REIT-funded project out of our Fish Passage program, and we did receive a $50,000 grant from the Sadman Recovery Board. The remaining expenditures, about 1.5 million, will be from REIT II funds. So this is just, we've been successful with requesting and getting onsite the prefabricated bridge and then going for construction in the following year.
Any questions on this?
What was the opening up, how many?
1.7 miles of additional stream habitat.
Okay, let's go on to 3G, right-of-way vacation for alley between lots 17 to 24 in Platte, Boston Harbor.
Yes, so the next three items are road vacations. The first one is alley in Boston Harbor. It was originally a part of the Boston Harbor Platte in 1907 is how we got it. It has been determined that the right-of-way was never opened or used for public travel and is not necessary to maintain the full width of the right-of-way for public use. And the benefit by this vacation to the county will be relieved for the liability of taking care of that area. We are receiving $4,000 in compensation for this vacation and are recommending the vacation of the road. Unopened right-of-way, I should say.
Thank you, Jennifer, for the email explaining the process.
Yes, so last evening I did send out an email. There is two different ways that you can go about handling the process for road vacations. And per county code, we are using a hearing examiner to go through the vacations. And based off an engineer's report, a public hearing, the public has an opportunity to comment on that, and then the hearing examiner makes a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners on the vacation, which has happened in all three of these incidences.
On your, you said you were getting $4,000 from a private party that's going to purchase the property?
They're not purchasing it, so the county on the unopened right-of-way, the county has an easement. And so when we vacate right-of-way, unopened right-of-way, the county is just releasing their interest in, in the property, and it goes to whoever the underlying fee owner is. So in this case, I believe it's the adjacent property owner, and yes, they are.
The underlying fee, you said, underlying what?
So the county for right-of-way does not own the land in fee. So there's like a bundle of rights that go with land. The county has an easement for road purposes, so we don't sell right-of-way. We vacate, release our interest in right-of-way. We might own other property.
But this, but this person that has title apparently to the property released, had to pay $4,000 to do this?
Yes.
And that's, as explained in your email last night, the reasoning for it, right? I guess I, I question whether or not that's good business from the part of taxing that person $4,000 to give something up. And I, I know we've done some of that through the Board of County Commissioners, and I don't think there's any cost when that happens. I don't know, maybe Craig's there if he knows the answer to that, but I just wonder about charging citizens when we don't have to charge citizens. We charge them plenty of them, you know, money anyway.
Craig, do you want to, do you want to field that, or you want me to?
Either way, it's required by statute. The compensation is a requirement by statute, and what they're paying for it is us to relinquish our rights that we hold to that unopened right-of-way. In this case, it is an alleyway that was dedicated to the county to open up in the future if it was needed. So that's what they're paying is the relinquishment of the right. It is required by statute. If the county wants a road vacated, if we're pushing for the vacation, it's not requested by a private citizen or an entity, that's where the no compensation comes in. So we don't charge people if we need to vacate a road.
Okay. They're seeking this?
Yes.
We can't gift? Because there's intrinsic value, right?
There will be for them, yes.
Now the property is free and clear.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. That's it for those?
Yes.
We've covered those three. Any questions on, any other questions on just any of the three vacations? Okay, last two are the auditor voucher lists, and questions, we'll move on to 4A. First department item is Public Health and Social Services, Vital Housing Courtside Apartments Funding Award Approval.
Good morning, Commissioner. Alex Burke, Affordable Housing Program Manager, and I am here just wanting to ask you to approve the funding recommendation from the Regional Housing Council to fund the Vital Housing Courtside Apartment Acquisition and Preservation Project to preserve and approve existing affordable housing for a total of $1,357,699.15 and authorize Public Health and Social Services to issue an award commitment letter. Background on the Vital Housing Project. The agency responded to Thurston County's request for proposal for affordable housing capital projects in April. The Thurston Affordable Housing Advisory Board reviewed and scored this application. They discussed the project, and then they recommended funding Vital Housing Courtside Apartments Acquisition and Preservation Project intended upon the agency providing additional information, which was identified and requested by the board. Vital Housing responded with this information, and the advisory board met and reviewed and discussed this, their information provided on their June 20th meeting. They unanimously approved a motion to fund the project. Staff then took that recommendation to the Regional Housing Council meeting on June 26th, and the RHD unanimously approved the advisory board's recommendation. And the Regional Housing Council is now recommending to the Board of County Commissioners to also approve this recommendation. The project proposal is to acquire and preserve 112 units of affordable housing at the Courtside Apartments in Olympia. The organization plans to update the units to achieve more energy efficiency. These apartments are currently rent restricted due to tax credit financing, but this financing is set to expire in 2026. So the acquisition of this property by Vital Housing will preserve much-needed affordable units within Thurston County. Once the project is fully funded and has met all pre-contract requirements, our office will then come back to the board to request authorization to sign the contract. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Nope, I think you covered it yesterday, today. There is an amendment to the language that we just got in the new version of the agenda that addresses what Commissioner Edwards, I believe, requested. Does that meet your satisfaction, sir? Okay, thank you, Alex. Let's go to 4B. Amendment number two of Development and Disabilities Administration County Program Agreement. Mark Moffitt, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Moffitt, Public Health and Social Services. This, we're asking you to approve amendment number two to our Development of Disabilities Administration County Program Agreement, extending the original agreement to June 30th, 2025, and increasing the contract amount by $7,529,193 for a revised maximum amount of $15,446,197. This contract allows us to provide services to people with developmental disabilities in both Thurston and Mason counties.
Questions on 4B? Nope, go on to 4C, also with, for you, Mark, professional services agreements for Supported Employment High School Transition Job Foundation and Community Inclusion Services.
Thank you, Commissioner. This one is directly related to the prior one. We're going to use the money from the Development of Disabilities Administration to provide employment services, community inclusion, high school transition, job foundation, services for people with development disabilities in both Thurston and Mason. And we, these are going to be contracts with five of our employment providers, Career Quest, Center Force, Exceptional Foresters, Morningside, and Bodis. And this, we do an annual contract with them starting July 1st and ending June 30th each year.
Questions on this one? Okay, thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Public Works again. I guess we have one item for Public Works for the department item, which is our contract award for Green Cove Creek Fish Barrier Removal.
Good morning, Commissioner. Jeffrey Walker, Public Works Director. This item is a request to award the contract for construction for Green Cove Culvert Placement Project. On June 13th, 2024, we had a total of six bids were received in response to our call for sealed bids. The low responsive bid was received from Quick Brothers, Inc. of Aberdeen, Washington, in the amount of $6,837,096. This project is to replace the culvert at Country Club Road that had previously failed. It'll be a new 150-foot post-tension bridge, and Matt gave you some details yesterday on that. We talked a little bit about the eight funding sources for this project, and I'm not sure if you would like me to go through those again, but we'll provide that information during the board meeting, a little detail on that, so.
There was discussion yesterday about, a suggestion about, you know, how to tell this, tell this story to the community at large in the best, most, you know, effective way?
Yes, so we have a couple of things that we're looking at doing. One is, is doing something similar to what we did on our restroom project at Kennydale Park and posting that, and then also working to put out, I think, a newspaper article for consideration, and we'll go through Megan's group that just talks about, could have a lot of different angles to it, but specific to this project, but just in general, the approach that Thurston County takes for going after grant funding to deliver on transportation projects, something like that. I'm open to suggestions if you have.
Matt had mentioned possibly putting like a time-lapse camera, like having a camera film the whole project and do a time-lapse video would be pretty, pretty powerful.
Yes, so we have drones that we have, and so that's part of what we'll, I think we'll be taking video along the way so that at the end we'll be able to see what it looks like, so.
All that material coming out, it'll be dramatic.
It is, it is, yeah. Well, and, and, yeah, even when we put the, the bridge in, so it's kind of exciting, so.
So for today's meeting, would it be helpful to do sort of the current image of the site along with kind of the artist's rendering for the future state? To share, because I can pull together something.
Yeah, there'd be a show on.
Yeah, we've submitted it through the AIS system, so it should be there.
Someone posted on our, some pics on our Facebook page after the meeting yesterday.
Yeah, that was our, that was Scott.
Okay. Scott does a good job.
Yep.
Cool, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
So then we'll have commission reports, and we then have to look at public hearings, which may interrupt the meeting or may not. At 3:30, two hearings, one, two kind of related issues. One is to consider application of Pacific Harbors Council for non-exclusive franchise for water distribution system and sanitary system. The second one is to consider application of Cooper's Point Water Company for a similar type of issue.
Yes, public hearings, both of them are for franchise agreements for the, the public hearing for Pacific Harbors Council and the Boy Scouts of America. Hearing on the 16th, they are providing water and sewer connections in the facilities for Camp Thunderbird. And so the project will install two new utility crossings in county right-of-way, one across Summit Lake Road Northwest for both water and sewer, and one at Summit Lakeshore Road Northwest for water only. It's allowing the camp to consolidate 11 separate drain fields into one onsite system and allow for future development of a dining hall there. And then the other one for Cooper's Point Water Company is, provides water connections to 31 privately owned lots on Cooper Point Road Northwest, and the project is replacing a main water line for approximately 1,100 feet with a four-inch high-density polyethylene pipe. The original pipe was installed in 1948 in his two-and-a-half galvanized pipe, so both of them are requests for franchise agreements.
Questions? No? Okay.
That's it.
Good morning, Jennifer. Chair of this afternoon's agenda, Proclamations and Awards. Director of the Board, Amy Davis.
Proclamations for review today, the Bi-Pac Mental Health Awareness Month proclamation is a consent item and has been shared with those who requested it. The next one is for the Thurston County Fair, and more to come on that next week.
Okay, we will have a board meeting on the 30th of July, the 5th, Tuesday of the month. Questions on proclamations and awards? Advisory boards and commissions?
My update today is on the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees. Prior to summer recess, we received five applications. I received one more during the interim and included them. So we have a total of six interviews scheduled for next week. Five will take place during the Monday morning boardwork session and one during the Wednesday morning boardwork session. I've allotted 20 minutes for each one, and wanted to use this time to check in on the actual interviews themselves. If you'd like questions developed or more conversational.
So we did this once before, and I don't recall being displeased with, I mean, instead of reinventing the wheel, did we have the questions that we, that we used before? Handy somewhere?
Yeah.
I don't know, is that, I know you guys haven't seen them probably, I'm sure it's Fornier and Klaus, but there was kind of a standard set.
The Dewey Desmal system and how you use index cards and.
A test on the Dewey Desmal system, I'm like, what is 90.131?
Is this nonfiction or fiction?
If I needed to find Argentina, it's revolution. No, they were a little more high-level than that. Why they wanted to serve, it's kind of pretty standard. It's only 20 minutes, and we tried to keep them, you know, the same set of questions. Why don't we, so we have. Why don't we, so we have, this is coming up, so this is coming up.
I can gather those and email them out to you all.
Yeah, Commissioner McGee, go ahead.
And just, just to clarify, these will not be livestreamed, right?
Oh, here we go. You want to get into that? I don't think it was.
I think it was legal counsel that was, we were kind of, I think we all agreed, and we didn't really want them livestreamed, but there was some confusion with legal counsel about whether they should be or needed to be for some reason. They do have to be open, so, but, but we can, we can request the applicants to wait outside the room, and of course, they don't have to do that, but that's not going to look very favorably on their, on their application if they're kind of refusing to like not see what the other applicants are answering. So that worked, I think, in accordance with the law and everything like that. Having them livestream seemed to be really a little dangerous for a couple of reasons, but, you know. Anyway.
I, I, why can't we look at it very much like a personnel issue or something?
That's what I thought, but, yeah.
Well, I know they're going to be open, right? Like that's, but, you know, I think last time where we livestreamed it, and it was the Timberland Regional Library interviews, we livestreamed those and it was, I think it was a consensus among the three of us that it was just, it just didn't seem fair. And so, because, you know, the other applicant could be, you know, seeing on livestream what the other one was answering, and, and so I think that's why we decided not to do it. And so I, that's why I was just wanting to make sure that, you know, we're going to be following the same process that we have in interviews relating to our committees' assignments.
Which is how the, the Board of Health appointments were conducted earlier this year.
Yeah, we'll follow the Board of Health process that we used, I think that works.
Was not livestreamed, yeah.
Okay, so Amy, if I understood you, you're going to email us the proposed questions that we used last time, and if Commissioners have any questions or concerns or additions, let Amy know. We'll kind of, maybe we can meet bef, you know, a little before 10 o'clock, and everybody just make sure we're okay with the script as we go forward and discuss any last minute tweaks to the, to the format. Okay, does that work for everybody? Okay, great, thank you for lining all that up, Amy, that's good, we'll get that moving forward. PIO check-in.
Good morning, Commissioners. Megan Porter, Communications Manager. After the recess, the Friday Five resumes this Friday. So just a reminder, if you haven't signed up for the Friday Five yet, please do so, so we can deliver that to your inbox weekly. We have a couple of video projects going on to include a story about Marshall, our courthouse dog, and an update on the garden at the juvenile detention center. We've also met with the new fair manager, Thomasina, and we'll be working with her to get some photos and videos during fair and with some other projects that are going to be going on in, around the fairgrounds. And then I want to introduce so. Casey, hi, this is our new internal communication specialist. He started last week, and we're really excited to have him on board. He's going to be working on the internal staff newsletter, which we'll have out the second weekend, the second week of August. And then he's also reviewing the style guide and internal policies and procedures. And then he will be supporting communications for the climate program and the racial equity program. So I just wanted to get Casey in front of you, so if you see him, say hi.
Casey, nice to meet you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for helping us out.
Any questions? That's what I have for you.
Any questions for Megan? Nope, okay. Onto item five, dangerous tree on tax title property.
We have Bruce and Jason that are going to come and update us on the tax title property that needs to have some more. Gentlemen, I'd like to introduce yourself.
Bruce Farber, acting Ascental Services Director, here to request funding the amount of $4,380 for the removal of the tree, of a danger tree from a tax title property. Here with Jason. Can discuss the details of the removal.
Good morning, Jason Ash, Facilities Manager. Back with another dangerous tree, this is located on a tax title off of Burger Court. You can see there's pictures included. The tree is school armed and split at the bottom. It's approximately 110 feet tall, and it is inevitable that it's going to fail. There are houses back behind it, you can see. So if one does fall, it's going to damage not only a fence, but possibly up to two houses. So the tree assessment is that it needs to come down and that inevitably it's going to fall down probably this winter. When I was on site, the wind was blowing and you could actually see it splitting and coming back together, so. It'll probably come down very soon if we don't.
Splitting like where those two, is it like two trunks that kind of merge?
Yeah.
And that's where they're breaking?
One, it's one trunk and then it splits about four feet up. As you can see, that picture's close up. This is the split.
Questions? Yeah, that's right.
How many bids did you get?
We only went with one bid since it came in under the $10,000 threshold off of the state contract.
I, I don't know if I agree with that. I, I, I personally think we need to get more than one bid. And the reason for that is, $4,000 is a pretty steep price to pay where we're taking some trees down, going to leave the wood for the individual, there's probably two quart of wood there. I, I'm just not sure I agree with doing this. And the other question I have is, the property, is that some property that we can dispose of? Are you aware of any of the ability that we might have to dispose of this property? I see other trees that are in that one photo that are tall trees like that. Are they on our property as well, and are we going to be faced with something later on? Is there a strip of land back there? Could we dispose of it, attach it to one of the other parcels? Or at least put it up for bid so somebody can maybe purchase that and let them take this down? I'm, I'm not there on this deal yet, so.
So we spoke with the adjacent landowners to see if anyone was interested in it. This is, actually has a stormwater pond on it, which the county maintains the stormwater portion of it, Public Works does, but it is a tax title, so we have to do very little to it. But none of them are interested in purchasing it at this time. We could definitely work with the treasurer, I know that's in the works to.
Well, if it's got a stormwater pond on it, then that's not going to work, you know, I mean, we can't.
Gentlemen, how, how hard would it be to get additional bids? Do you have other vendors?
Yes, well, I mean, we can get additional bids if that's the.
And I, I'm wondering, does it, does it need to be taken down in two-foot sections? Or can it be topped? The top can fall on the ponds, the stormwater pond or whatever, and then maybe fall the tree, it'd be a pretty simple process. I'd say that's a couple-hour job there if that was possible. $4,000 just seems pretty steep.
So we could certainly get other quotes from vendors, but if we took this off the state contract, the state of Washington does a valid RFP process to put vendors on their shared contracts. So we can turn to the small works roster.
That's the alternative, just small work roster, you call, get three phone bids.
And get some more quotes. We could certainly do that, but I would say that this is, if it's off the state contract, it's probably one of the best prices we can get for bringing this down.
I nominate Commissioner Edwards to go down there and take it down.
I would do that. I could take it down there, I will use a chainsaw instead of that, but yes, I could do it.
All I care about is that we're using local contractors.
A lot of trees just like this have done that job, so that's why that just seems excessive.
Well, I mean, we had one.
When it's a danger tree, though, you have to have additional, like, insurance and blah, 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 blah.
We had one.
You're bonded, but there's other people out there that are bonded.
We had one bill for like $41,000, and that was the one that was like, what? But that was like, it was 40 trees, it was like eight trees.
Eight, eight cottonwood trees.
Those are huge messes, though.
That bid actually was about $60,000 lower than the next bid. Yeah. Which was the same company.
Yeah, so I guess, I'm just saying in light of that experience, like $4,000 doesn't seem off the chart.
It's a different type of tree, like cottonwood tree makes it, it's a huge mess.
Well, I don't think they were cottonwood, I went and looked at that job, they were alders.
Were they?
Okay. And they were troubled trees.
Yes.
For sure. I couldn't, I couldn't stand.
It was more than $4,000 a tree, I'm saying.
Yeah, I bet.
I mean, I don't know, if it, maybe it varies wildly by tree species, but.
I, I would like to at least have somebody put in the ability to bid on this at a more reasonable fashion.
I'll do it for 500 bucks.
I'd, I, I would maybe do it for less if I had the time.
There's two more bids, right?
We can quickly get bids and bring this back. Thank you, Jason.
See if we can save some money here for taxpayers.
Back shortly.
All right, well, that will be back for probably next week-ish, or the next meeting for the, we'll see if that's a little price and what can move forward at that point. Okay, other Commissioner items. I guess, uh, I was gone, I don't think the board has had a chance to discuss the item that you had raised about the juvenile jail and all, I mean, is there anything we could talk about there? Just to bring everybody up to speed on what's going on. I've seen some stuff on Facebook and I've seen.
I don't know if we're ready to.
That'll be a future discussion?
Yeah, we can definitely, we're doing some research right now, and Rob and Leah are jumping in, we've contacted Ted and over at the juvenile courts. And so we look forward to maybe after the next couple of days, having some more information.
I, I guess I, I am curious about who's looking into what. And the reason I'm asking that question, there's a long history of the courts not being very receptive to messing with the juvenile function.
Yeah.
And whether, you know, whether we're talking about leasing space, who would occupy that space, what? You know, they don't want to expose, they don't want to expose our kids to maybe hardened problem kids from elsewhere. I know that's been an issue, so I just ask who's, who's trying to look into it? Ted works for the courts.
Right.
And I expect him to be responsive to his bosses, you know, so that are somewhere in between him and us.
Right, Rob and Leah are working with WASAC, the original call, and information that was sent, they have an information meeting today. So it's Rob and Leah that are looking into it. We'll be talking to Ted to get some information, but we're not really sure what the opportunity is, so give us some time to look at that and then be able to come back and sketch that out for the Commissioners and then find out where the courts are at.
And then we have not solved the problems that exist over at juvenile, yeah.
And that's, that's being discussed with this.
Oh, you think maybe the state would pay for FX?
I don't want to say, we, we, we're like, we're giving the county manager the opportunity to look into all opportunities.
Just looking at what, what is the situation? Does the situation provide an opportunity for the county? We don't know if that is or if it isn't, so we're just having conversations right now. Soon as we get some information, we'll be happy to bring it back.
Thank you.
All right, I'm just really curious about, you know, the connection, like I was trying to piece through the, how does this connect, uh, who's, you know, how does this connect to us in what ways? You know, like we, we have policies that, we implemented policies that have created very little need for detention space in our county for juveniles. Obviously, other jurisdictions haven't followed that lead because they're overcrowded and three, you know, ma- maybe they need to look at the kind of policies that we use rather than trying to farm out kids to other jails. I mean, I, that's a question that I would want to ask, like, is this a, is there a crisis here?
Have, have the policies we've instituted, is, I mean, does that mean that there's less of a need? Are we just not doing some of the things that need to be done also?
I mean, that's a different conversation, but I haven't heard any information or, no one's argued to me that juvenile crime rates are higher in Thurston County or where our policies are failures in some way, and we're not getting the results and that, that other jurisdictions are getting through incarceration, so. That's a separate conversation, but I'm not, that's not a concern of mine at this point. My concern is, we know why, as Commissioner Edwards has alluded to, we've heard a lot of arguments, I haven't agreed with all of them, but I've agreed with some of them about, you know, why, there's a reason not to disrupt the operations of our juvenile facility. If we're going to do that based on a crisis somewhere else, I have to first be convinced that there is a crisis. And well, how that, what's the foundation for all that? Before I'm going to start, me personally, going to go down the mental exercise of how to integrate new prisoners into our jail and deal with all the concerns of the judges, like, I'm not there yet. I'd have to be certain that this is an absolute necessity, I mean, I'm willing to be a team player. I was the one advocating for helping Mason and Ju- Grace Harbor, our smaller county neighbors. But helping the state, they've got tons of resources, and they've.
But they don't, they don't in the juvenile system, they've shut down a ton of them.
Yeah.
And then they've, they've, they've also, like, they stopped doing these hearings where they're releasing people, like reviewing their sentences, so there's probably a whole bunch of them where they could have these hearings again that could be released. Then there's a whole bunch of them that are sitting in juvenile institutions that are between 19 and 25. That didn't used to exist.
Right.
And then they shut down Maple Lane, they shut down the Larch Camp, they shut down another camp. While all those things happened, and now they've got Green Hill, which has 140 beds, sitting at 250 inmates. So there is an immediate crisis.
They've just reduced their.
Yeah, they've reduced their capacity, they've stopped holding hearings where they could review sentences.
What is that all about?
I don't know, but there's, so there's reform that needs to be done. But while that gets figured out, there's also a crisis that needs to be helped with, is, like, for sure.
My mind's not, my mind's open to it, I just, it's just, I just needed a little, I'm just hearing a little bits and pieces.
We've got a great place for people to land, right? We've got a great institution, we've got great staff, we've got a good system.
Where, where is that at?
What?
Where's that great place?
Our juvenile, just, like, when I toured there, there was like, there's like five kids in there.
No, no, I don't.
And there's like, what, 40 beds?
Going back to what Taya has alluded to, I mean, that's the question for me. What do we, how does it, how does it fit? What about Maple Lane? The cha-
Maple Lane was shut down and they converted it from DCYF to, it's, I, I think it's DOC now, but it's all mental health adult offenders. And the, the buildings that they had are now, they, they haven't used them in like seven years, and you, you can't like go in there and kick the furnace back on, those things are just moth.
Well, I mean, before, before I challenge.
Hello?
Commissioner McGee?
Can I pipe in?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I, I know that there is a lot of questions, and so I think we're getting ahead of ourselves. I think that first we really need to let the county manager touch base and, and kind of see what our options are before we are, you know, trying to decide on something where we don't even know if they're interested or which direction they're going to head in. I just, can we, I just really want us to, to be sure that we're not really getting into the details of it so early on.
Okay, but I am hearing that there's a lot of work being done, and I just want to lay out some concerns because I don't even know that there's a need to do any of that work because I, I need to hear some of the details of how we fit, as Commissioner Edwards is a good way to put it. How do we fit into this problem? And before, before I'm willing to commit county resources to trying to help somebody else with a problem, I need to make sure that there's a rational, logical path toward how we would fit to solve that problem. And I, I just haven't.
And that's why our staff is like gathering that information from like WASAC and other. We're not the only ones who are, who are doing this. So that's, right now, all that is going out is like information gathering, so if we are interested to move forward, then, you know, we have more information. I just, just getting into the weeds of it now, it really, our. Power goes down, is basically it, and so, and, see, you know, and, and if there's more questions from Commissioners at that time, and, and see if it's something that we're really. and, and see if it's something that we're really interested in pursuing, then at that time we can do it. But right now, it's really early on to really be discussing the pros and cons and, and...
We got about half of that.
You were breaking up a little bit, I caught most of what you were saying, Commissioner Mehan, you're just preliminary from your perspective. I, I mean, I was out of town and I saw like, I saw a pretty detailed post from Commissioner Fornier and sounded like he was kind of in the weeds of it, so I'm just trying to catch, I'm just trying to catch up myself, that's all. I'm, I'm not trying to push anything forward that doesn't, that's not ripe yet, but I was trying to figure out, where are we with this and what's, what's the next step and, and who's doing what and...
Oh, those are good questions, we are, we will be attending, well, today.
This afternoon at three o'clock, there is a online forum.
Yeah, so that's an information, but there's several counties going to be on that, so it's not like we are advancing any particular direction. We're just, we saw the post from WASAC, we asked, can we get more information? And then I reached out to Ted to ask him, you know, can Leah and Rob connect and talk this through offline? So I think once we bring those components together, we can have more to, to discuss and talk about. But that's all, that's all the work that's gone into it so far.
Okay.
Is Ted going to be meeting with you folks when you have this meeting?
With the WASAC meeting?
Well, whatever you and Robert are talking about.
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
Well, I guess my concern is the same as Commissioner Minzer, that we don't overoffer, that something might disrupt what we're doing right now. And I'm just making basically a statement that we've, we have had discussions in the past over how we can be more efficient with juvenile. The Superior Court is very concerned about us meddling in their activities, I guess is the best way I could put it. And from the state standpoint, they've created their own problem here. And I don't know how obligated I feel on bailing the state out and disrupting what we seem to have, which is a pretty good program going. So I, I just want to make sure that as the meeting moves forward, that you guys, you don't have that history, so now you do have that history that Ty and I have brought out. So I think that's very important. And I actually think it's important that Ted be involved. I, I don't, I think Ted ought to hear what's going on. So if you could include him, I think it's worth including him in the mix.
I forwarded him the appointment for this afternoon's WASAC meeting.
Who's attending that, you?
Leah, Leah mostly because we have the board meeting this afternoon.
Yeah, we have a board meeting, but, you know, the information popped like last week. We chatted with Rob and Leah like on Friday. And so this is, I mean, only a few days and so I reached out to Ted, was it this morning? So, you know, with everything else that we have going on, we're, we're trying to figure out what, what actually that means to us, if anything. This is simply exploratory, so. But if Ted's available, and Ted seemed to be aware of the conversation already, so it was our thought to connect with him and figure out what their perspectives are.
Well, if Leah's listening, I, you know, I just, I guess my point is the fact that there's, my, my interest in helping is there, if there's a crisis, but the definition of a crisis is a little more complex to me than just, do they have too many bodies in jail? You know, is it, well, what are they doing to, you know, what other things are they looking at to mitigate that? If there's no other, you know, it may be that it is a crisis, but I would just need more information to conclude that. So that's what I would like her to be listening for and she can maybe explain to me kind of what's behind this crisis and is there no other alternative than finding additional jail space in other jurisdictions versus other possible things that could be done? So, that's good. Okay, other commissioner items, you want to take out this morning? No? Okay, good, well, we're efficient and helped to have reviewed everything yesterday, so we'll see everybody at two PM and we're adjourned.